Welcome to the Winthrop School Committee Meeting of Monday, March 8th. The meeting will be held both live here at the high school and through Zoom teleconference. Patty, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory? Mr. Kapabianco?
Here.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swote?
Here.
Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. This meeting will be recorded and made televised live. Mr. Martucci, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Boncory, for the flag for those in law. Okay, public comment. Patty, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do. We have, uh... Adriana Pavlos.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to comment. As we approach the discussion of additional days of in-person learning primarily for K-5 students, I do not want to lose focus on our collective efforts in getting all students back to schools in person. While I wholeheartedly agree it should begin with our youngest learners, all students deserve the same access. I joined the DESI committee meeting on Thursday afternoon where the Commissioner of Education was granted authority to dictate the reopening of schools for the Commonwealth. There were three clinicians who spoke, and their comments on the mental health crisis adolescents are facing that they are witnessing at an escalated level was gloomy and consistent with many of the experiences parents have spoken about publicly and other clinicians have affirmed. These accounts make me wonder about those who may not be as vocal or those who may not have the same access to resources and care. While I do not believe public schools will solve either of the public health crises the Commonwealth is facing, one being COVID and the second being mental health, I do believe the structure and services the public school system offers can mitigate the symptoms that students are struggling with to help them cope. I'm looking forward to hearing the plans that are to be presented tonight and how they will support returning to in-person learning for all students safely. As we approach the one-year anniversary of COVID impacting our daily lives, I would also like to thank all of you, the administrators and teachers, for trying to make the best out of an unprecedented situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Marissa Ferrara. Marissa Ferrara.
Hi. Thanks so much for taking my call tonight. My name is Marissa Ferrara. I am the senior class advisor at Winthrop High School and the parent of four, including three current Winthrop students, a fourth grader, a sixth grader, and a senior who is trying desperately to salvage what is left of his senior year. I think it's great to see some of you meeting in person tonight. Thank you for that. I want to thank Ms. Barry for her forward-thinking motion last month to commission a study on the return to full in-person learning for all our Winthrop students on April 5th. And I also want to thank Ms. Howard and our school administrators for conducting a study on the logistics of getting all children who want to return to full in-person learning the opportunity to do so. There has been a lot of news coming from the state over the last week, most notably the governor moving Massachusetts to Phase 3 Step 2. 2.1 million people in the Commonwealth have received their first shot, and over 700,000 people have been fully vaccinated in our state. DESI has come out with newly updated guidance to help all communities move to full in-person learning. Locally, Winthrop has been solidly in the yellow stage for four continuous weeks. And as of the latest numbers I saw of March 5th, we had just 37 active positive cases of COVID in Winthrop. I urge the committee to continue to follow the science and reopen all Winthrop schools to all students. Every family should continue to have the option to remain remote if they so choose. However, we must continue to move forward. Science has shown us that schools are safer than the greater communities they reside in. I appreciate all of the safeguards and protocols that have been thoughtfully put in place in all of our schools and want to remind you that schools are simply the safest place for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you for your comment. Patty, any further comment?
I have a letter to read from Jenna Dorr that was asked to be read into public comment. "Good evening. I would first like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to go to school in the hybrid model. Looking back, I can't help but wish this model had been in place since September. School is the safest place I've been, and it's a shame we lost all that time when we now know how successful it's been. It's time to make up for the lost time and give our students what we deserve. I understand that the state has mandated K-5 to return to school full-time, and I do not see why middle schoolers and high schoolers are not. We cannot be let down again. We have had so many successes since returning to school. We were even able to play contact sports against other towns. Restaurants, bars, casinos are all open. So many people are back to work full-time and in-person. Why is school the only exception? More specifically, why is public school the only exception? Please allow us to return. Tonight is the night to stand up for the students. The can has been kicked down the road far enough, and I myself am losing hope. Seniors finish school in May. We don't have time to keep pushing it back. So many seniors have checked out. Some are struggling, others are complacent because they feel their voices aren't being heard, so why bother? Please listen to the science and allow schools to be fully open. If kindergarteners can follow the guidelines, the older kids will be able to as well. Please consider all students tonight when making your choice. To the people making this decision, a few weeks doesn't seem to make much of a difference, but to the senior class, it gives them a chance to make up for all the time they have lost. Please allow us to begin full-time in-person learning on April 5th. Thank you." And again, that was Jenna Dorr.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No, not at this time.
Okay, moving on. We have no delegates and visitors. Minutes of February 22nd, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, seconded by Ms. Barry. Any discussion on the minutes of February 22nd? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory? Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swote? Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you. Financial business procedures warrant SPW 21-15 in the amount of $116,630.70. I'll entertain a motion for that warrant, and that amount.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I please have a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swote?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next up on the financial is payroll warrant, SPW 21-16 in the amount of $740,954.23. I'll entertain a motion for that warrant, and that amount.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swote. Any discussion on the payroll warrant?
Billy, hear you.
I said, any discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
abstain.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Stand.
Ms. Swote?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Stand. Do we have any budget transfers this evening, the secels?
No. Not tonight.
Okay, moving on. Buildings and grounds. We have none at this point. General function. Such things we have none. Ms. Howard, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. I have the long-awaited study that the school committee has asked us to do, and I would ask Ms. Gallivan to pull that PowerPoint up. I'm going to step closer to the microphone and off the screen so you can hear me. If we can make that full screen, that would be great. So tonight, we are meeting with an agenda item that has been long-awaited in which people are looking to see what we have found in the study, which was asked of us by the school committee. The item will review... This item is going to go over and review the status and thoughts on moving forward for full in-person learning prior to the close of this school year. The update will include the current status of each school, the known adjustments that need to be made to return all students to in-person learning. It should be noted that we are still awaiting the directive from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and there may be additional changes that will be required prior to any transitions being made. On Friday, as many of you know, the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Jeff Riley, received approval from the State Board of Education to implement a new Massachusetts education policy. The policy is going to be a mandate that will be a statewide tiered approach to the elimination of hybrid learning models and the return of all students K-12 to five days of in-person learning prior to the close of the school year. Although the details of this plan have not yet been shared with superintendents or school committees as of this meeting, it is expected that we will have the plan, which will include mandatory items as well as other guidance within the next few days. What we do know is this. Physical distancing requirements are going to be reduced in the classrooms from six to no less than three feet. Elementary students K-5 will be expected to return to five days of full in-person learning the week of April 5th. Schools having difficulty meeting the mandatory return date of April 5th will have the opportunity to apply for a waiver. What constitutes a waiver and eligibility for such is still unknown. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Policy will include expected return dates for middle school and high school students as well. We also know that we will need a large purchase of furniture such as desks to accomplish classroom and mealtime spaces for all of our students. This is because we are currently in a model of project-based learning district-wide, and we typically use tables for our students, which we have moved many of those tables out of the district when we returned, out of the classrooms when we returned to hybrid. What we don't know as of yet is the details of the new education policy. We're eagerly awaiting those details to help guide us as we continue to move forward. Fortunately, and prior to the state's action, we have been planning for a full return, and I believe we are positioned better than most in our ability to accomplish yet another transition for our students. The pandemic was not anticipated, nor has it been predictable. Public education has become extremely polarized, and we should be working together in the best interest of students. This past year has been riddled by discontent throughout the state and the nation. Instead of working together to resolve issues, there has been a lot of finger-pointing and blame, resulting in a loss of focus on our children throughout the country. There have been pandemic-related protests, including sit-outs. School community members across the state have served local leaders with petitions for full remote teaching and learning and some for full return. Union leaders have taken votes of no confidence against superintendents and school committees. Massachusetts parents representing 70 communities took a vote of no confidence against the Mass Teachers Association, and the Mass Teachers Association and more than 100 locals took a vote of no confidence against the Commissioner of Education. We have been fortunate in Winthrop, as the above-noted difficulties have not significantly impacted our school community at the same rate as most. I attribute this to communication and work ethic and our willingness to return our students to school. Redesigning public education during a pandemic has not been easy. However, here in Winthrop, we have managed to maintain our focus on students and avoid most of the contentious issues that have slowed progress elsewhere and negatively impacted public education. I expect our positive attitude and acknowledgement that all students do need to return to in-person learning will continue as we work together with the community on a full return to in-person learning without unnecessary delay. There are many logistics to overcome, as we are finding. We are committed to doing all that we can to overcome each and every one of them. Our students and staff deserve a safe return as soon as it can be accomplished, and we are committed to making that happen. I would ask that you remind... That you remain mindful that DESI has not yet provided us with the details of the new policy and understand this awaited information is necessary for us to accomplish a smooth transition and avoid any unnecessary disruption to our students. As many of you know, I am not a patient person by nature. And I'm just... I can understand that way. I do understand that waiting is not easy. I do, however, strongly believe that moving forward without details of what we can and cannot do will potentially negatively impact our students, especially if we give them false hope of a start date that would have to be delayed as a result of this new education policy. As soon as the policy is in my hands, which I believe will be this week, I will share it in full with the committee. That does not mean that I do not expect us to continue to plan for our students to fully return. I anticipate this information coming out within the next few days, and the work that we have ahead of us, coupled with the work that we have already completed, will allow us to have a very quick reaction to what comes before us. So I want to turn you to the PowerPoint that I put together, which speaks to my technology skills, which have dramatically improved since I have been forced to do everything virtually over the last 12 months. When we started the school year, if you can go to slide... Just back to Slide 2, Larry. The school committee approved the motion on February 22nd. The motion was to conduct a study exploring the return of all students to in-person learning four to five days a week on April 5th, but no later than the start date of the fourth academic quarter, pending a report of how three, four, and five-foot distancing impacts spacing for each school. And they requested that I, as a superintendent, present this study to the school committee by March 8th. And here we are on March 8th. Next slide, please. I have already gone over in my brief opening what we know as of today, and this is just another snapshot. We know that K-5 elementary students are going to be expected with the board's new plan to start the week of April 5th. We do know that that plan needs dates for middle and high school to be determined. It is my hope that in the information we received this week, those dates will be clearly indicated in the plan. That does not necessarily mean those dates have to be the exact date. I would imagine we will be allowed to go before and only after if there is a significant issue. However, not having that in writing yet, it is hard to say that's exactly what is going to happen. We also know that distancing in the classroom is going to change from six feet to no less than three feet. In the current guidance, and I know there was some current questions regarding what does three feet mean? Where do you measure from? The current guidance says from the edge of its school desk to the edge of a school desk constitutes three feet. We don't know if that is going to change. However, if it does, it certainly is a game changer in terms of the number of desks that we can fit into a classroom. We also know that mask-wearing is going to remain unchanged, and all students and staff will continue to have to do so, just like the mitigation protocols that we have in place. Handwashing, mask breaks, cleaning and sanitizing, health checks, travel and transportation guidance, close contact tracing and quarantine, we believe that those are going to remain the same. I have received questions from parents this week relative to the mitigation protocols that we have in our schools and specifically received some questions or commentary around the middle school. I can assure you, having been in the middle school a number of times, spoken to a number of middle school students and the staff on a daily basis, that in the lunchroom of the middle school, there is no congregating of students. Students are not walking around and meeting up with each other in groups of two, three, or four. Students are seated in individual desks in straight lines looking forward as they eat their lunch. And in fact, the assistant principal has a barrel on wheels in which she approaches every student, and as she approaches them, asks them to put their mask on, and they throw away their food. Staff vaccinations is another thing that we know will not be included in the policy that is coming out from the state. To continue, what we do know is that the middle school and high school, that there will be an expected date of learning. In the protocol, we also know that distancing, again during lunch and mask breaks, we don't know whether or not that is going to continue to be six feet as it is now. At six feet, we know how many desks we can currently fit in our cafeterias, and we'll speak to that in a moment. We don't know as of today what the waiver process will look like, what constitutes the need for a waiver, and whether or not remote learning time will be part of a waiver to start the school... To finish out our school year. Contact tracing. We don't know if there is going to be any changes in CDC that align with three-foot distancing to avoid having to quarantine large numbers of students while they attend classrooms that are less than six feet. New guidance did come out from CDC today. I believe it was about 30 pages deep, and I have not yet had a chance to read that. We also don't know what will be mandatory and what will be guidance. As we know, those are two very different things, one being flexible and one not. We also don't know if there's going to be any flexibility with the middle school and high school in terms of our being allowed to start prior to any dates that have been set. The last thing we don't know is whether or not the Department of Education is going to provide districts with support in terms of such things as vendor support. The obtaining desks right now seems to be similar to trying to get yourself a COVID vaccine. We've called a number of different vendors and asked questions regarding what they have in place in the event that we needed it, and we have also, as of today, ordered over 400 desks as we anticipate the process of moving forward. In this past... In the past return-to-school model, the Department of Education has offered support in making available through a state bid Chromebooks, technology, and other items that were very scarce as we all tried to return to school. It is my hope that their new guidance and their new support will offer the same. You could... Larry, if you could skip through the next, which is just a few comments that I had made prior. And now on to the study. We have spent the last few weeks sort of in flux. So we had the study that the school committee had asked us to do in which we got on immediately and started doing many things that we had already done, such as re-measuring classrooms now that we do have students in them in the hybrid learning model, seeing if there was any flexibility within those classrooms in terms of what we thought back in August about how many kids we could fit in a classroom at six feet, and now re-looking at how we could fit kids in at six, but no less than three feet. We measured cafeteria spaces. We measured gyms. We looked at every classroom in our buildings to see if there was a possibility to reassign teachers who may have more kids coming back during full-in-person learning to other classrooms, swapping classrooms with each other to maximize space. We also went back and reviewed the Department of Education's guidance on how we could lay a classroom out in terms of maximizing space and also how we could reconfigure our cafeterias during that time. We have also reached out to vendors to get a sense of who has what left in terms of furniture, as well as the possibility of getting some tents and also containers to store the materials that we have in school that will be removed when we bring more desks in to achieve classroom space at three-foot distancing. So, starting with the Gorman Ford Banks, I think it's important for people to understand the school enrollment today. So this is our current enrollment, kindergarten, first and second grade. I'm not going to read through them all. You can see them. You can see that first grade is our largest amount of students in the Gorman Ford Banks school. You can go get down so that you could see in the current model who is attending school hybrid and who is attending school remote. So the total number of kids, for instance, in second grade, there are 118 students who are hybrid coming into school, two in some cases with our high-needs kids four days a week, and 27 of those children are fully remote. And you could look at the percentages as well. It's important to understand that the pre-K, at the K-5 level, fully remote students are taught by a fully remote teacher. That doesn't mean the teacher is home teaching. The teacher is in the classroom in either the Ford Banks or in the coming school, and they are teaching a class that is made up of exclusively children who do not come into the school building. Those are the children that they teach. Our regular classroom teachers teach their hybrid group, so they have a handful of kids in front of them in the morning, and they also have a handful of kids on Zoom during the same time. When we looked at our room specifications, and we have gone much deeper than the summary that we're giving you, the back to studio staff, but it is sort of of no value when we're looking to the public, unless you really need to know that, we gave you the standard classroom. You have to understand that classrooms at the elementary schools are very different in each elementary school building in terms of the shape. There's also other things in classrooms such as built-in cabinets and cubby space, and that's all been taken into consideration. So the standard classroom is 672 feet on average. A little bit bigger in some spaces, a little bit smaller in others. And the desk measurements in a layout would be 11 desks that we could fit in if we continued to keep our kids at six feet apart, like we're doing right now. And when that distance drops down to three feet, we'll be able to fit 19 desks. Small classrooms... Smaller classrooms are used for special education services, ELL services, and individual services for our students, and you could see how those desks are fitting for those students as well. I'm going to ask Ms. Pearson... I've asked the principals to come in and speak a little bit about their buildings and give you somewhat of a summary of what we are expecting as we move forward with our classrooms and where we're at with determining the total number of students that we can fit, so that you do not have to listen to my voice for the entire night. So, Ms. Pearson, if you would not mind just giving a little review of the distancing options in your school.
Sure. It's nice to see everybody truly just to say. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to explain the status of what our concerns are. At the present time, we are looking at a need to educate... There's 37 students that have decided to come back between first and second grade. In order for us to be able to accommodate those 37 students and to accommodate the students that are currently in our hybrid model, we would need to engage all seven teachers at both grade levels, at the first and second grade level. At this time, we are operating, because we have a large number of folks that are selecting remote, we are able to get by with six teachers at each of those grade levels. By the way, I'm not ignoring kindergarten. I'm focusing on first and second because kindergarten has the potential to resolve itself. In first and second grade, we're not at that place just yet. So, again, we're looking at a need for accommodating both space and through staff 37 first and second grade students if we look at them collectively. If we were to break them down, I can tell you that we have 144 students that have selected to come back to full in-person learning in first grade. So clearly, we need those seven classes, and the same would be the case in second grade, where we have 134 students who have selected to come back for in-person learning. As Mrs. Howard said, at the current three-foot distancing, all seven classes are needed. The logistics of what I just described to you make us needing to find two additional classroom spaces. That's not too much of a concern. The bigger concern is being able... That's not too much of a concern, uh, the bigger concern is being able to find staff. So, um, you know, there's a couple of different ways that Mrs. Tucker and I have spoken about being able to accommodate that need, um, and we are exploring those options. There's, there's still a lot of planning and adjusting to do. The biggest concerns, I think, that the committee would need to be aware of is that in order to be able to accommodate these needs, and depending on what we can find out there to help us do that, we are looking at the potential of having to consolidate grades for the purposes of instruction, meaning to have a mixed-grade classroom. There's also the potential that we would need to either reassign or repurpose teachers. I mention that because I have received a lot of emails, uh, from parents that are concerned that conceivably their student could be looking at their third, and in some cases even fourth, teacher this year. The reality is that there isn't an awful lot we can do about that. We have an obligation to accommodate the needs of all families, and we are very, very committed to doing that. Like you and the community, we want our students back, but there are obvious restrictions to being able to get that done. It's not easy to find available teachers. So, um, I keep saying that these are all things that we may need to do. We just got the data finalized this morning, remember, the, um, commitment form was just due last night. So, um, there's a lot, a lot that still needs to be processed and, um, gone through as far as the particulars are concerned. I don't want you to get sick of hearing my voice any quicker than you get sick of hearing Mrs. Howard's voice. Um, I can try and answer questions, but to give you a whole overview of the complexities of making this transition, um, honest, honestly, I wouldn't know where to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson, I think we'll save questions to the end. However, I, I think it's important for people to look at the considerations that we have listed here. And these considerations are things that we're working on every day to think about how can we overcome some of these challenges that we are finding. And as we dig deeper, and once we have Desi's expectations in front of us and they have mandates, that's going to make us dig deeper to try to think outside the box and figure out things such as, do we have to eliminate snack, is there another way around it? And that is what our team is doing continuously. In terms of purchasing furniture, that's a no-brainer. We know kids cannot come into the classroom and stand for six hours a day. They cannot stand while they're eating, they, we need to have desks. We, in, in the hybrid model that we're in, the desks that have been, uh, put into classrooms, we removed all the tables, as many tables as we could, and we put desks in. We took those desks from the old middle school, I believe there were over three hundred desks. I, I would imagine my name is dug into one of them, as, as many of our street members' names may be. We took those desks and, and cleaned them and repurposed them so that we could get our students into hybrid learning as soon as possible. Like I said earlier, we were on this because of the role of the school committee asking us to do this study. We were fortunate that we had a little step up and were able to pre-game and go ahead and purchase a number of desks already, knowing that K to five is, is, um, likely to come back with the first week of April. So, uh, what we, we also knew was we needed to get information from families as to what they were going to do with their student if and when, uh, full-in-person learning was offered to them. We had to know that in order to do this study effectively and in order to get our students back in school in a timely fashion. Without that information, we would be chasing information, uh, at a later time and be out of the game in terms of being able to get our staffing done, as well as, uh, getting furniture into our buildings. So these considerations, Laurie, if you could just go to the, to the next.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Howard, can I just add one thing to the comment that you just made? And Ms. Galvin, if you could go back to the other slide, please, because it's an important point that you brought out, Mrs. Howard. The considerations that are listed on this slide, these considerations honestly don't have very much to do with the number of students that are going to be returning. So my reference to you in the commerce, in the comments prior to Mrs. Howard making this distinction, that's really just about the logistics of staffing and the placement of students. All of these considerations here are absolute definites that you can count on. We will most assuredly be using the cafeteria, the gym, and the multipurpose room, just by way of example for lunches. So thanks, Mrs. Howard, for distinguishing that, because what you're seeing in front of you on this slide are the absolutes, there are no variables involved in any of these things, and I did want to just, um, highlight that.
So then the next slide talks, and we were not, we are not going to go through each and every one of these, and I'll make this PowerPoint presentation available for folks. These are a whole list of other considerations that were put together by our return-to-school team when we started to do the second start, this, this study for the school committee, so that we could develop the, uh, choice form that we sent to parents. And we, we heard loudly from parents, the last time we did a survey, or we've done a number of surveys, but the last time we asked folks if you were coming to hybrid or if you were going to stay fully remote, we listened deeply to what the parents had to say, and they wanted to know as much as they could before they could make their choice. So these are the very things, uh, that were pretty much laid out, this is a little more detail in the Ford Banks this time around, uh, that were laid out to parents when we asked them to make their choice. And again, I'll make this available if people want, uh, to, to see it, so you don't have to screenshot it from your telephone as you're watching this on TV. If you go to the next, um, page, Ms. Galvin. So here come my, my creation of Google Slides, um, issues that I'm, I'm still learning Google Slides. So what I'd like you to focus in on is the commitment form that was filled out by Gorman Ford Banks parents, telling us how they were going to send their children back to school. When they filled it out, it's reflective of eighty-nine point six percent of our families believe they will send their children back to full-in-person learning. And nine percent, or a little more, um, believe they're going to continue to, to remain fully remote. That gives us a baseline to go by in terms of what parents are thinking. We do realize now with the Department of Ed, because this, this, uh, commitment form was put out prior to us understanding that the Department of Education was going to take such a, make such a bold move and create education policy. So as that information comes to us, uh, and, and more changes, because we believe after we dig a little bit deeper into this, if we find that there are significant changes from what we have reported to families already and initially, we may have to, as we get close to, to a decision, allow families to revisit that choice if in fact there are going to be more dramatic changes than we have already communicated to parents, so I want to be fair about that. And when I was talking about my, uh, Google Slide skills in the survey, parents were able to make a comment, uh, or click other option, and I do a little bit of education on how to get those off my slides. So I'll be speaking with Mr. Curly, uh, off time, and he can teach me how to do that. So I would focus on the blue and the red, and eighty-nine point six percent is a significant jump from where we are with hybrid learning versus remote right now. At the Coming School, if we can switch to the next school building. Again, I'm not going to go through all this, but this is a nice snapshot of what we have for students in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, how many are hybrid, how many are remote, and then again, the square footage of the buildings. Cafeterias and, and classrooms and student bathrooms are the, really, the, the biggest focus when you're looking at returning all students and doing it safely. We don't, again, we hope that in the, in the, uh, report from the Department of Education, there'll be information about cafeterias. Do the kids still have to be six feet apart, can they sit at tables? We had all tables in our cafeterias. Now we don't, now we have desks set up in rows that were taken from the old middle school, and we will need to outfit both the Coming School and the Ford Banks with additional desks to meet the needs of all of our kids. We're going by the model and the thought that they're still going to have to be six feet apart, why? Because they will have their masks on for an extended period of time while they're eating. It's a little difficult to, to eat your lunch if your mask is on. So that is unknown, if that, uh, is a change, that will be a win for us. If students are able to be less than six feet in one way, it won't be a win if the contact tracing policy and procedures from the CDC don't change. So, next, uh, next slide, Ms. Uh, Mrs. Brynes is also with us tonight and may want to add a little bit more, um, in terms of how our classrooms are set up and some of the considerations, um, that we are looking at at the Coming School.
All right, thank you, Lisa, and thank you for, um, having us and giving us, giving us this opportunity, it's good to see everyone. Um, I think Superintendent Howard and Mrs. Pearson have really gone over, uh, the list of considerations. So some of the things I'm going to be saying are going to be repeated. Basically, for the Coming School, we can fit, um, up to twenty-four, probably squeezing twenty-five students into a room at three-feet dista- distancing. Uh, when we're doing this, you have to consider also where the student is sitting in the room, where the student is in relation to the whiteboard. You also have to consider if there's a, uh, another personnel coming into the room, such as a, an ESP or a parent educator, because then they also are going to add to the capacity of that classroom. Uh, again, we're going to have to order some furniture, because we have, you know, moved furniture around from the remote teachers' rooms into the cafeteria. And at this point, we do not have a multipurpose room, so when the kids are back full-in-person, we'll, we will have to use the gym. We'll have to have more desks for the gym. Um, and again, uh, it's, when we do go back full-in-person, there will be some staffing issues, which may mean hiring, uh, monitors to cover the, uh, areas now that we've added, for example, the gym, because now we have all the kids in the caf, so we can have one or two people in there. If now they're going up to the gym, we might need one or two people in the cafeteria, and then a couple more folks up in the gym. So, uh, just to summarize, I think the major, uh, considerations we have now are your child might again have a change in his or her teacher or their teacher, the distancing safety and furniture availability is another big issue, and staff hiring. So I would say that those are the three biggest issues when we return full in-person. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you, and, you know, again, it's important to remember, we're working on this. This is not, we're not coming out to say this is an impossibility, but I think the transparency that folks have asked for during this, you know, unprecedented and unpredictable time, we, we really strongly believe we need to give you all the information that we have at hand, so that as we move forward, you, uh, you, you've had the information in front of you, and you'll also have an opportunity prior to April fifth. And, you know, for us, April fifth is a long time, not, not a long time away. For some people, especially our students who want to be back in school tomorrow, it's a long time. But we do still have work to do, and we are not taking our foot off the gas pedal to try to get any of these hurdles that we're identifying, um, over. We, we're trying to get over the hurdles and, and continuing to do things like looking for furniture. Can we rent furniture versus buy furniture, and how, uh, all of that may look. If you go to the next slide, Laurie, um, you could see that, um, again, just another worksheet of the things that were pretty much in, in the, uh, commitment form that was sent to parents at the, at the Coming School level, so that they were aware of the choice that they were making at, at that time. And then the next slide just shows where we are at with the survey, um, the commitment form that went out to families. We received that information last night, we, we understand that we gave people a week to, to think about it, and we gave them the information to think about. When that information comes back, understand that we have to get in and disaggregate all that data. We have to look at who's sending their children back, what classroom room they're in, do they receive services in the school, can we accommodate that? Those are all the behind-the-scenes things that are going on now and need to continue to go on, at least for the next few days, uh, as we await the guidance and then begin to also, uh, attack that and see how that will improve our situation or hopefully not present more hurdles. So seventy-nine point seven percent of our, uh, students have committed to fully returning. And again, if we have to change, uh, the goalposts, we will be talking to parents about that in terms of the commitment that they have made and see if we need, uh, to open that up again. We'll go through the middle school and high school, uh, we treated them as sort of two separate groups. So, um, I know we're one building, but very different learning models. You can take a peek at six, seven, and eight, you can see where our highest numbers are in grade seven, uh, and then in grade eight. The total number of kids that are hybrid and remote, uh, the percentage rate is, is interesting when you match that percentage rate up with the kids that are returning. We're still working on it grade by grade, we gave you, um, in the, in the graph that I gave you, we did it by school for now. But we are still digging into that data to, to match those up. Classrooms, MSBA, just for folks who don't understand school buildings, I hear a lot of talk about Catholic schools fitting twenty-five kids in at six feet apart in a classroom, and how come we can't do it? Fortunately, and unfortunately, we have newer schools, especially the middle high school, and in, uh, any MSBA project and any new school building, classrooms in every space in the building is created, uh, for efficiency. Classrooms at the middle school and high school are much smaller than an older high school, such as a, you know, seventy-year-old building that's, uh, housing, uh, a private school or, or a Catholic school, even some of the charter schools that are in older buildings. Space is something that people really do have to, have to keep in mind when you're comparing schools. So, Mr. Curly, I'll let you talk, uh, about your, uh, your building and your students.
Uh, sure, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, a couple of things to highlight on this slide is when the middle school was built, uh, the majority of the classrooms were outfitted with two-person tables that are five feet long. So, the information you see here is a little bit different than the max occupancy note on the last slide in terms of, we tried to fill out this, this template based on where students would have an available view of the front board, the ClearTouch. So with that said, currently, in our classrooms, we have thirteen to fourteen tables where right now every student has their own table, and that's six feet distance. Now, we would have moved to full five-day in-person learning at three feet, we would be at twenty-four to twenty-five decks at a max. Realistically, you're probably looking at twenty-four, and even then, it might be twenty-three if you want every child to have access to the front board and to the ClearTouch, which is temporarily, or I should say primarily, um, the main device, especially when students are going to be learning from home as well. So the things I kind of consider at the middle school, obviously, is that furniture piece. With two-person tables, uh, we cannot return at five days of in-person learning. You would have to have, um, we'd have to either buy, or I should say purchase, or lease, at least, or I would say about six hundred-plus desks. Every classroom has to be outfitted with this, with this largest size that you, that each teacher has. We have about four hundred and seventy-five students, um, in our school, so we're, we're putting it based on about six hundred-plus, including for additional furniture for lunchtime. That, that brings you down to the cafeteria, currently there is spaced out at six feet. We have seventy-two, uh, desks in the caf, um, which is, is able to fit everybody in a hybrid learning model. In our team room, we have another twenty-five or possibly thirty desks, where we could have additional students have lunch up there. And in order of, what I anticipate based on the numbers from the form the parents sent out, is we're likely going to have to rent some type of tent to go outside. Um, the goal is to stay away from the gymnasium, because from my understanding, the gym could be used during the fall too and, and spring season for sports. Based on the numbers that we anticipate for students that would come back to five-day in-person, I feel confident that we can house it. But the major obstacles are the furniture, we can work around lunch. And then the third obstacle that I fe- that I see as a big challenge would be is we have some sections of our classes, whether it's accelerated math or our specials. We, uh, we offer six specials at the middle schools, we have seven homerooms. So typically, three or four students, depending on each grade, have to push into a different class of specials. We would have to do is, students would have to be reassigned, not all, but some, into a different special, and that would mean they would likely miss out on one or two specials and have to repeat something they already took. Also, for accelerated math, at the seventh and eighth grade level, those numbers are high. I had a chance to look at, um, the mandatory, the mandatory form that families had to fill out, and I anticipate almost all of our advanced math coming back to school five days at grade six, seven, and eight. So that would mean that likely some students are a couple at each grade level, could have to be reassigned into a different, or a regular grade eight or grade seven math class. Now, with that said, we're also looking to find who some certain space, or maybe those classes could go. I thought it was important to share with the committee that instead of having twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or thirty students in advanced math, it might be twenty-five or twenty-six. And there could be four or five unhappy families if their child is reassigned. But again, we're working hard to try to find alternative space for possibly those sections. Um, so as a whole, the middle school, uh, based on, and I know Ms. Howard will show it out in a couple of minutes, it's about eighty percent. Um, looking to come back to the middle school at five days of in-person learning. Um, furniture is the big obstacle where with with the two-person tables, it can happen um multiple times. And even this afternoon, working with staff to see if we could keep those tables in there, do some desks. There might be a little flexibility to decrease the amount of desks we have to order. Now, we have to spend the time going through the numbers of the students that would be coming back five days, look at all the class sections. And then I would have a better idea exactly how many desks we would need to rent or to purchase. Uh, but again, I think we can do it at the middle school as long as we're able, like I said, to get the furniture, move some classroom placements. And, you know, try to uh figure out maybe having some lunch outside, but that's the middle school in a nutshell.
Thank you. And and Ms. Gal- um, Galvin, if you can just pull up the uh the graph on the students returning. So a couple of important points just to go to remind you of. When we're talking about ordering desks, like I've said, we've already ordered four hundred desks for the elementary level. Uh, four hundred desks were approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars for four hundred desks. Just so people have a sense of the cost of things, um, we were able to utilize uh the remaining money in COVID funds to purchase those. And I'll be working with the school committee in our budget subcommittee meeting to talk about the estimates that we have for the additional furniture that Mr. Curly has talked about. Some of that additional furniture uh is a a large ordering or or rental of desks. We have uh already taken the step to reach out to companies to get quotes, to see if we has stuff that we can rent and what the cost differential will be. Not that that's a major game changer, but we have to get the stuff too. So there's, we we need to, a reasonable estimate of when that those desks could be delivered to us. In terms of space for lunch, it's certainly something that we don't want that to be the barrier of why our kids don't come back to school. So we've reached out to tent companies. We've received quotes from the tent companies. And um, the quotes are on average about eight thousand dollars a month uh for the rental of a tent. Uh, there are things that we would shave off of that. We don't need lighting because our kids don't go to school in the dark, so they can keep their seven-hundred-dollar lighting. Uh, but they also will have to have a place to sit when they go inside those tents. Uh, whether that be self uh brought mats to school or uh tables and chairs. We have lots of kids with allergies. We're sitting on the grasses. Not appropriate. There's permitting fees and uh, which is not that big of a deal. Uh, but there are steps in the process. We would also need to get permit from the town for use of space. We're not, uh, none of our schools have huge spaces. Uh, we have identified space that uh will remain quiet for now until I'm able to speak with the town in terms of what we are asked would be. Um, at the Cummings, at the Fort, and at uh the Middle High School. So those uh things are in process with our team and our custodial staff and our facilities manager. So that as we uh get closer and as we get the guidance and know what we can do, uh, we'll be able to act on that immediately. I'll now talk, uh, flip over to the high school. Um, high school now has, as everyone knows, a little different configuration than the rest of the schools. There are four grade levels at the high school, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade, and twelfth grade. Uh, we also lump in our postgraduates, which is our life skills students who are uh remaining with us until they are twenty-two. So you could see the numbers uh for each one of those grade levels. I I bring your attention to the current learning model of cohorts. What's interesting uh in that is the percentage of students that are hybrid and remote by grade. You can take a peek at that uh at at your leisure. Um, and we were uh eagerly anticipating the response from uh both our middle school and high school families. As to how they would cho- choose to come back to school if we were coming back five days uh of in-person learning. And so we have not yet uh had the opportunity. Again, these came in last night and we were, we had a host of items that we were working on today to get us uh to tonight. But we will be looking at the returned students by percentage rate by grade level as well. Um, we have to do that because we have to know what the class sizes are going to look like and how many desks we have to have in those rooms. Again, the classroom space uh is there and it includes the science lab. We haven't talked a lot about bathrooms, um, but two things that we uh can't lose sight of is eating and going to the bathroom. Uh, both of those things happen multiple times a day depending upon the grade. We have multiple lunches per day in our school buildings. And the number of kids that we are allowed to go into those spaces is critical for us to know as we take steps forward. Especially if six-foot distancing in the cafeterias is uh going to be less than that, we'll be able to achieve things differently. Um, but bathrooms, whether you're a middle school, high school, or a five-year-old, uh bathrooms and having more than one or two students in a bathroom at a time. Based on the size of the bathrooms in all four of our schools is not doable uh at this time. So therefore, um, those are, I think, critical things that parents have to think about at the lower level. There will be extra waiting time to go to the bathroom and know more and more that more than we do because we'll be on the receiving end of uh someone's inability to wait. And we're aware of that. Again, not a game changer for us, but something parents need to be aware of. So Matt Crumbie, I will let you uh take over next and talk about high school.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Howard, and uh good evening, everyone. Uh, as you look at this uh first slide here, you can see that we don't have listed uh average class sizes by grade level. Uh, at the high school level, we have uh a lot of, most of our classes are mixed. So at the very bottom, you have the average class size for a winter high school class. Uh, in terms of uh student occupancy is uh twenty-six, so about twenty-six students in each class. Some classes have uh as many as uh thirty students in a class and some as few as as ten. Uh, where we are currently with the six-foot distancing for the teachers and six-foot distancing for the students in the classrooms. We're able to fit fifteen students in desks in each classroom. Uh, that that is working out uh really well in our hybrid model right now. Uh, and we don't have too many spaces that are overcrowded and we're we're, we can accommodate that pretty well. Um, as we um shift down and look at the cafeteria, um, currently we have, um, excuse me, I wanted to talk about the. If we move into a uh scenario where the distancing is reduced to three feet, uh, we'd be able to fit twenty-eight desks in the classroom at three feet. Uh, which would accommodate most of our uh high school classes. Um, classes that have more than twenty-eight students would have to uh be moved to some of the larger spaces that we have available. Um, in our, in our uh building, um, science labs and our team room. Um, in the cafeteria, currently right now, we have eighty desks at a distance of six foot uh from uh from each desk. Uh, our lunches in a hybrid scenario are are actually pretty small and that's, that's enough to uh accommodate us at this current moment. If we move forward uh for a full return uh in anticipation of um what the results uh came back last night from the survey. Uh, I've, we would be at a place where we would have to accommodate about a hundred and thirty students per lunch, which means that we'd have to uh move our eating spaces into other areas of the building. Uh, some, some uh proposed areas would be the first-world project, project area, our LP room. We also have an outdoor patio on the high school side, um, that could fit about twenty to thirty students um at at six feet. Um, so in terms of special considerations to think about when we come back to school, uh, we have the the same challenge that uh Mr. Curly had outlined with the tables. Um, we were using all, currently using all of our desks in our classrooms and we would need to uh order approximately two hundred more desks. We, we, in both the middle and high school, we have plenty of tables, um, but those don't do, um, those don't help us out in terms of distancing uh and and setups for our classrooms. So we would need about two hundred desks to uh make sure that we could accommodate all the students in all the classrooms. Uh, would certainly revolve, uh, involve a lot of um shifting and moving our classrooms around, uh, and students and teachers not having uh being in one classroom all day. Uh, and having to rotate, which isn't the biggest deal, but it's definitely uh a logistical thing that would take some time for us to work out. Um, bath- bathroom capacity at the high school level uh is is certainly uh something to to consider. Uh, that there may be delayed access for students because of occupancy would only be at uh, with the three-foot distance would only be about um three, three uh students per bathroom. Um, which during a high school lunch or even during a transition time can be a little bit tight. Uh, we would also uh have to hire uh additional staff to cover some of these uh alternate cafeteria spaces that we may be using. Uh, so there'd be some staff that, staff that we'd have to bring on. And probably the biggest hurdle that we'd have to overcome, which we're still facing right now in a hybrid scenario, is that many of our uh you uh WHS teachers are working remotely from home. And so students, if they did come back full-time, some students would be in school and participating in online classes with teachers who are at home uh under the supervision of a class monitor. So those are the, those are the kind of the considerations that uh we're, you know, we're working on. Uh, again, I think it's something that we would be able to do, uh, but there's a lot of logistics we'd have to work out uh to get there. Um, so that's the high school in a nutshell.
Thank you. And then, Lauren, if you could just pull up their um return survey results. There you go. So seventy, seventy percent uh we approximately coming back and still high, twenty-eight, twenty-five percent staying fully remote. Um, uh, if I can touch on a a couple of things, Lauren, can you just go to the next slide? And I just have a few more minutes uh left. So when when we're talking about preparation, um, and the ongoing preparation that we've been doing since last March and have not swapped, even with the new study. This is just a snapshot, and as you could see, at the Womack Four Thanks and the Cummings, it's very similar because we're dealing with similar age population of students. Um, there are quite a few things that we're, we're still preparing for as, and we have time. We still have time, not that we want time to go any longer than it needs to be. Um, but this is a process that that does take a little bit of time. And certainly, the department is going to add more, uh, I hope, and not a lot more, but more consideration. Uh, and more for us to understand in terms of what we can eliminate for any type of preparation or what we need to add to it and how quickly we can get it done. I think something that's been talked about a lot in the schools across all the schools uh is staffing. Just so the general public knows, every te- every teacher in the winter public schools right now who is working remotely from home has been approved with an ADA accommodation. People that cannot elect to work at home just because they want to, they are required to come to work. And the ADA accommodation that they have been granted was granted because it was reasonable for us to accommodate for them. During the mode of learning that we're currently in, which is hybrid learning. When we shift to full in-person learning, anybody who is currently teaching and approved with an ADA accommodation will need to go through that process again. And it will be upon the school district to determine when we're back in full in-person learning, is that uh accommodation, does that continue to be reasonable for the school district? Or does it cause an undue burden on us? And if it causes an undue burden, we do have the authority to say we cannot accommodate you. I'm sorry. Please understand, we run the risk of that certified teacher, who may teach algebra two, may teach geometry, still not being able to come back because of their condition. But the kids are still going to be here. So as of right now, if kids have access to a certified teacher via Zoom and a monitor in the classroom. If we take the certified teacher out of the mix, the children will still be in a classroom and potentially with another certified teacher and just a monitor. That is not what we want for our kids at all, and we will try to avoid that as much as possible. In terms of um uh cafeteria and extra people we need to monitor our kids, whether it's elementary school, middle school, it doesn't matter to us, please hear our needs. So i- if if you think you're interested, still interested, please contact the school and let them know that you are ready, willing, and able to help with bathroom, lunch monitoring, recess monitoring. Um, you name it, uh, we could use it. So if anyone wants to volunteer, uh, please feel free to step up and do so. In terms of extra spaces, uh, we we are also investigating, like I said, uh tents to the outside. I think I spoke about that earlier. Um, and then there's the waiver that was talked about by the commissioner. I sat through that entire seat, um, board meeting myself. Uh, they talked about a waiver that for for uh schools that could not accomplish coming back initially, they're talking K to five, but it has to be K to twelve. Uh, if schools cannot reasonably come back when the commissioner has stated yet not provided us anything in writing, uh, that kids will come back on the week of April fifth. The school district can apply for a waiver, and I believe it's not just to not do it. I believe the waiver is, in our situation, it'll be regarding our schedule. We cannot change the school schedule again. We cannot uplift and tip over these schedules one more time. We've done it several times. We did it when we were coming, initially coming back in hybrid, then we had to switch to remote. Then we came back in remote and we did surveys to our parents. We listened to our parents. We provided a more robust remote model. And we changed the schedules at that time. And to change them now again, when parents already have their after-school care, their before-school care, their Wednesday care, when all of that is already in place. That would be very difficult for parents to handle, and we understand that and have heard that. But more importantly, the schedules that we have in place right now for our students have taken into account all of the students that we have brought back beyond just our hybrid students. So we have returned several hybrid students from two days to four days. We've had our special education students in since October twenty-fourth. We've had uh ELL students in, uh, phasing them in between October, November, and December. So these students are all on a schedule that allows us to provide them with the services that they are entitled to under the law. If we were to have to change the schedule for any students or or at any school level, it would directly impact the mandated services of special education. And uh, English language learners. Therefore, um, and and because we're to understand that any remote learning, any fashion of the day that is remote. Aside from the full remote learners, such as the specials at the elementary school, which now occur at home at the end of the day. We are to understand that the guidance and 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 uh directives that are coming from the department may tell us that those hours don't count towards time in learning. Well, if the hours don't count, technically, you can't do it. So we will have to ask for a waiver to be able to continue to do it because the offset of that will be to be in violation of our special education students and ELL students' time in learning. And their services that they're entitled to under special education law. Um, so that is the type of waiver that this school district in this moment thinks that we may need. Um, I think the Department of Education would be hard pressed not to give us that if it was going to enable our students to come back to school five days a week. Um, we've talked a lot about the preparation. If you go to the middle school and high school, it's very similar. I think key to all of this is our desperate need to get the the new state policy in our hands. To make sure that it's not going to, uh, provide us with any more hurdles, but also to give us the information related to where we can flex. In some of the hurdles that we currently have. With that information in hand, um, and with the time we have left to do this. Uh, and with the work that was done prior to to this, because we have been listening and following along with the department and seeing what the expectations may be coming down the road. And because the school committee asked us to do this study, I believe we will be uh in a position to uh react quickly. And to come back to the committee and let the committee know if there is any hurdle we don't think we can get over. So, um, I don't know if you want recommendations from me at this point. I think, you know, perhaps could uh open it up for uh questions from the committee or however the chair would like us to proceed. I thank you for listening. I can tell you that I could stand up here for another six hours and talk about the individual schools. Um, and and all the work that has been done and needs to be done and we're continuing to do. Um, but that's why you hire someone like me. That's why you have principals. That's why you have teachers. We're the ones that need to do this work and bring you back the story with the hope that being transparent will allow you to eventually trust us. I need people to understand that these changes are not the changes that the winter public schools decided were going to happen two weeks ago. This was the Department of Education. They have moved the goalposts on us mid-quarter, mid-game, ten times. It's extremely frustrating. And if you're a parent that doesn't follow public education every day on Twitter and. and read the Department of Education's website, you wouldn't otherwise know that this is not the winter public schools' teachers, the staff, the administration saying we enjoy tipping kids upside down every other week. We enjoy the fact that kids are not in school. We want our kids back in school as soon as we can get them back. And we wish that the Department of Education would stop moving the goalposts and tell us exactly what we can and cannot do for a final time so that we can return. And I will stop talking and return it to the chair.
Ms. Howard, I think it would be helpful if you did give us some recommendations as the options that are presented tonight. And then we could open up to questions.
Sure.
So at least we'll know the direction that you see this going.
I just so happen to have some recommendations. And I understand that many people that are watching this were expecting us to come in today and say, this is what we can do and we're going to do it starting on this date. And had the Department of Education not thrown the curveball that they threw one week into us doing this study with you, we may have had a different recommendations. And they may not have been as good as they're going to be in the long run. And I think that's important to know because I'm hopeful that the department is going to give us some flexibility in how we do this so that schools like Windrup will have great air systems, great Merv thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen filters, windows that open, buildings that are fairly new, teachers that are physically here. My hope is that the flexibility and what they present to us is going to allow us to move faster than other schools. However, given the, as you see in number one, I'm suggesting that the school committee get that information in hand before, and I'm just changing my screen a little bit because I know you can't see it. So I'd suggest that you refrain from making a vote tonight if that was your plan. I'm not sure if it was. Given that the educational policy that's coming out from the Department of Education, that is the authority on the return to school. And it's pretty clear that April fifth for elementary is the only thing that we have actually heard is not going to be flexible. That I'm expecting that guidance. They said Thursday, prior to coming into this meeting. I was told that there was a tweet that said it was coming tomorrow. If it comes tomorrow, it'll be in the hands of the school committee at the same time as I receive it. And if so, if that's the direction you take, I suggest that the school committee and our return to school task force or our team review and analyze the policy and take the appropriate actions to determine, moving forward, our ability to meet or exceed the mandates and recommendations. And I say to meet or exceed, meaning that if there are dates on there, we can do better, we can do better. And I think that's the direction I would encourage the school committee to go. Depending on the release date, now that I wrote this morning, so like our moral when I got here this afternoon, depending upon the release date of the policy and regulations, I believe the school committee could and should add a school committee meeting to the calendar if there is a need to do so to make any type of a decision or to take any type of a vote that will allow us to continue to pursue this as fast as possible. I think that we need to continue to keep our families informed more often right now than in the past because people want to know how fast this is going to happen. And, you know, important to me is remaining positive. It's hard, I'm going to tell you. It's hard to remain positive when every time we take a step forward, something comes from somewhere else making us take a step backwards or stand still. Understanding the time is important. It does take time to get things into the school, to get materials and things that we need. But I think of utmost importance is to trust the fact that we're committed to getting all our kids back as soon as we can accomplish it in a manner that's safe and in a manner that's not going to fail. There's nothing worse than promising kids something only to have to disappoint them. As adults, we understand that, but as kids, we don't. So that's what I would ask of you. However, I'm open to any questions or concerns. And again, I was very frustrated by three o'clock this afternoon when the department hadn't contacted the public school to tell us something was coming either tomorrow or Thursday or Friday. It's left us up in the air. We're very anxious parents and most importantly, anxious, excited, and sort of just sitting back and waiting, kids.
Can you pull up the rest of it, just so that we can see if anything else?
Yes. Mar, can you take the slides down? And I will do this. There we go.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Howard? Ms. Barry, I want to be recognized. Ms. Barry?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Can the people in the room come to the microphone so we can hear them?
Yep. Sorry. I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions for each of the principals and then also for Ms. Howard. The first question I have is for both Ms. Pearson and Ms. Grimes. And Ms. Grimes, thank you very much for taking me on a tour of the Cummings School. I appreciate your time. I didn't get a chance to write you an email, but I appreciate that. You mentioned that teachers are needed, but not how many. So I'd like to understand from each of you, are we talking two teachers, ten teachers? How many are we talking?
So Ms. Pearson, you want to go first?
Okay, sure. Hi, Mrs. Barry. So minimally, we will need, minimally, we will need two teachers. It is more likely we will need three teachers. I guess I'll just leave it at that. It really is going to depend on the complexion of the students in those classrooms.
Okay.
At the A T C, it really depends on how the schedule unfolds and, you know, what the conditions for getting a waiver are. That's going to determine whether or not we may need some teachers at the R thirty Cummings, but no more than a couple. And either way, we're going to need monitors.
Okay.
And I would say three tops.
Great. And for Mr. Curly and Mr. Crombie, you talked about a very high need for desks, which was kind of a surprising high number, especially at the middle school. I think there was a note of about six hundred plus desks required, but there's not six hundred kids enrolled in the school. So I'm wondering what the discrepancy is there. So that's part A. And then part B is along the lines of the tables that seat two children. Is there not a reason why we can't put plexiglass down the center of those tables versus having to order more desks? That's just curious on that.
Sure. So in terms of the amount of desks, so currently, after the first one week, we started in a hybrid learning model, our students started to transition from class to class. Some classes have a larger amount of students in it. So that way, you know, each classroom has to be outfitted with its highest number of students. Now, we could reduce the number of desks if we didn't have our students move from class to class. But we realized quickly in one week, we only had, you know, less than half the school in. Having middle schoolers in the same room, same seat for six and a half hours is a huge challenge. So that's why I've tried to look at the higher end in terms of desks. And then also, if we do go outside, there is the possibility of, you know, having desks or some other type of tables. We've also explored, you know, having students sit on the ground, maybe purchasing some mats, things like that. So that's kind of part A. And again, I wanted to put on the high side in terms of budgeting just so as we get deeper in the process, we don't kind of short sell ourselves of what we need.
Got it.
Ms. Barry, what was the second part of that question? I apologize.
Is there a reason why you can't line the desks with plexiglass down the center as a partition as opposed to, you know, getting more desks?
Yep. So if the guidance comes out from the Department of Education, if the plexiglass is allowed, then it's something we could definitely explore. However, right now, when you put two students next to each other at a five-foot table, that gives you about a foot distance between the person to your left and to your right. And that plexiglass would have to be across the entire table, but then also behind you because it's, you know, looking to the left or to the right. Now, if guidance comes out at our level that they recommend three feet and plexiglass is allowed, then that's something we can look into. But right now, I know currently in a hybrid model, it's something that schools are not supposed to do. But that would be a great option. If we got the green light to do that, we would do that in a heartbeat.
Okay.
I would like, Mr. Curly, can you speak a little bit as a math guy to the advantage of having desks in the classroom, whether it's three feet or six feet versus the tables? When the tables end to end, so we have rows of tables, why that is difficult to achieve?
Sure. So actually, today, myself, Ms. Franzese, and I went back into the classrooms and kind of looked to see if we could push the tables together and make them long rows in terms of, you know, if we could fit some extra students in there. The problem we run into is that it's very uncomfortable for students because if we're going to set them three feet apart using the tables, you know, the chairs can't move very much. Someone's feet is going to be at where the legs are of the table. And so the desks, I believe, are twenty-eight inches in length and it's sixty inches of the table. So we can fit a lot more students in a classroom using individual single desks.
Okay. And then lastly, this is really just for Ms. Howard. I think I speak for everybody when I say how frustrated I am with the Department of Education as well as D U S I. They say that they're going to provide guidelines by a certain date, and they don't. They say that they're going to, you know, give us a guide for how we can go to school. And then they change it so that it would have been that we could have had our students in school since September. I've lost faith in both of those organizations. And I really believe that as a small nimble community, we need to lead the charge and we need to be pioneers in this, and we need to get our kids in school full time, regardless of what it takes to do it and as soon as humanly possible. These kids are suffering emotionally, physically, mentally, and their education is falling behind. I would like to ask the chair if we can't move to a vote to return children to school of grades by the fifth.
You can make the motion, but I'd just like to finish people having their opportunity to speak.
Sure.
I'll second Julie's motion.
There's no more, Sean, it's over, Mr. Gavin Banega. We're going to finish the discussion with the superintendent with that question and answers. And then we'll go to a vote and discussion. Ms. Hope?
This is a question, Mr. Chairman, to Lisa. I don't know if you've been able to do this, and I don't even know if it's possible. But what is the total cost of desks and teachers and assistants? What will be the total cost? And does anything in the COVID response give us some relief on the cost of this?
So to answer your question about the cost, what the total cost is, I can tell you that one hundred desks cost seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for one hundred desks without chairs. So I can estimate what the math will be. I gave you an estimate of what the tents will be. The overall cost of educating our students in this pandemic above and beyond what the general cost of education would have been, that's not something that's registered up in my head as of right now, but eventually, there will be a cost. Now, moving forward, you know, the cost is what it is. And that is not something that we are considering a barrier, and I'll tell you why. If a cost had to be the hurdle for our education in general all the time, we would be nowhere. And so we should have put the cost to the left. However, eventually, things do have to be paid for. I can tell you that I've worked very closely with the town CFO, Anna Friedman, as well as other folks in the town to share resources. We have FEMA money that we're able to utilize. We also have COVID grant money. We've used a lot of our own school-based grants for technology to offset the need for the COVID money so that we could use COVID money for other things, such as plexiglass, classroom furniture, technology, you name it. So I'm less concerned with what the cost is. I'm a pretty talented writer when it comes to buying things. With all my years and history of grant writing, I can tie pretty much anything that happens in public education to the COVID pandemic right now. We're watching those funds very closely. And I am aware that there is still some flexibility in those funds. And if we do need to go to the school's budget to access anything to pay for these items, I would go before the school committee if we didn't have any wiggle room in any of our line items that would be appropriate to attach it to.
So you're not concerned about, the cost is not the issue?
Cost is not the issue.
Okay. So what, aside from that, so if the cost is not the issue, and the staff is not the issue?
So staff is an issue.
Okay.
Could potentially be an issue. You know, when I say staff, not the winter public schools staff that are in place. But if we need to add staff, you know, the issue is finding people. Finding people who can come to work, finding certified teachers who are currently not employed. I, you know, there's usually not a big list of currently not employed, but creative and talented.
Right.
And our job is not just to put warm bodies with hot feet in front of kids unless we have to. But we also can't leave kids unsafe. And we have to make sure if we're putting them in multiple spaces in the school to eat, that we have someone in there that can watch kids with, you know, airborne allergies, kids who need to leave the room to go to the bathroom, depending upon their age, contact tracing, keeping kids in their seats. Those are all things that are required of us right now that we do have to pay attention to. And when I say I'm not worried about the price, you know, the cost of things, there's probably a few people here standing up on the back of their necks calling me. There's a lot more on my plate than worrying. If I say that I know how to commit something to a COVID account, it's because I'm working with people who tell me that that money is available.
Okay, so we can get, maybe get through the cost and maybe get through the staff issue?
Correct.
And so, okay, you're going to be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't now, can I get through whatever the Department of Education, can we get through whatever the Department of Education tosses our way, whether it's tomorrow or Thursday? I can't give you an answer to that till I see what they throw. And what they have thrown in the past has been unpredictable and taken me off my feet a number of times.
But if they don't throw anything else, given what you have right now on your plate, we can do it?
If we can get a waiver for the time in learning or if they've lifted that, if they've lifted the time in learning restriction or if we can get a waiver for time in learning restriction, if we can get all of the things that we've outlined that we need and anything else that we discover over the next few days with the guidance and directives coming out, I think it can be done.
Great.
Any further questions?
Yes, to the chair. Mrs. Howard, can you comment on the sense that they are going to allow three-foot distancing for the middle and high school?
So I keep standing up to get closer to the microphone, not to avoid you seeing me. So do I have a sense about the high school? Is that what you're asking me?
Yes.
So I don't. I mean, we're at the mercy of the department not giving us, you know, the information verbally. You know, in the past, we've gotten a lot of information verbally and then the guidance has come out. So we know what to expect. In this case, we haven't been given that opportunity except for what we have seen on TV in terms of the April fifth date that the governor has spoken about for K to five. And all we've heard about middle school and high school is that it is to be determined. There was discussion and talk among superintendents and others that folks were hearing that CDC was supporting K to five explicitly and then providing some support for three-foot distancing or more support for three-foot distancing at six to eight than they would be at the high school level. I've not seen that in writing. I don't know how you justify that. If CDC is going to come out with that and say high school kids have to stay six feet apart, I'd like to see the justification behind that. And I'd also like to know what the ramification is if you don't follow that as a superintendent or as a school committee. So that if that is the deal and we, as a school district, as a school committee chooses not to follow that, is there a ramification? I know that not following school, state school policy and mandates, you know, removing of your federal and state entitlement money is talked about. I've never seen it done. Maybe it has been done and I'm just not aware of it. And, you know, I'll keep the committee informed as to my thoughts in challenging those situations.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you for the effort that's been put into this report. I know on your behalf and also the principals, I know that this has been... I know, um, on your behalf and also the principals, I know that this has been a tremendous amount of creative thinking and working through logistics that people can only begin to imagine when it comes to accommodating all these little students going in and out of the building and going to the bathroom and taking their lunch breaks and taking their mass breaks. And, um, I really appreciate that you have really gone above and beyond to find a way to accommodate this.
Well, I can tell you it's a full team effort. There's not a single person in this district that's not weighing in and, and offering support. Um, so thank you for that though.
So this isn't, this isn't really a question. I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to reference a study that, um, had been done um, regarding the three foot and six foot distancing in high school. While the D E S I hasn't provided, um, specific, um, guidelines around that, I can tell you that the science today is supporting, um, three feet over six feet so that the transmission of COVID is not explained by the droplet model. The idea that bigger drops of secretion fall in the first few feet around someone, as was thought when the original social, social distancing guidelines developed. Second, a meta-analysis on COVID nineteen and other closely related coronaviruses show that the benefits of increasing the distance from three to six feet is marginal in contexts where the risk of infection is low, as would be the case in a classroom with universal masking. Most on point is a recent study that examined the dynamics of in-school transmission in Ohio, working with seven school districts that offered in-person learning in late November and early December of last year, near the peak of their daily recorded infections in the state. Researchers identified all students and teachers who had tested positive. They then repeatedly tested both their close contacts or those that they would have been closer than three feet of, and other students who were exposed for more than fifteen minutes at a distance of less than six feet, as well as a comparison set of students who kept their distance, including several hundred attending other classes within the same school. The rates of infection among close contacts and students who stayed more than six feet away were nearly identical in both elementary and high school, suggesting minimal value from strict adherence to a six-foot distancing rule as long as masks are worn consistently and correctly. So I just thought, uh, uh, with the absence of having that D E S I recommendation, that, that study, um, is super relevant in this situation. Thank you. Um, I can email it to you guys. I can't get to the internet. This is on my notes. I'm, I'm having trouble connecting, but yeah, I will share it. I think I shared it with Lisa. She's got it too. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's, it's helped, Julie, it's helpful to share that kind of information. And I think it's helpful to share it. I, I'm hoping that the Department of Education is looking at all studies. Um, it's, it's interesting to me that, you know, uh, the department is, is working and acknowledging some aspects of CDC and not acknowledging other aspects of CDC. So eventually I'd like them to make a choice on what direction it's going to be. Um, and again, I don't know for sure whether or not that was a, a rumor, but it wasn't heard just by me. It was heard by many other superintendents. And I'm hoping that the pressure over the past few days, uh, has opened the eyes up of the department not to go in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, have you recognized?
The scope was ahead of you.
I, I just, excuse me, Tina, I'll, I'll be quick. But I, I thought, um, you all, you sent me, you sent the whole committee, the, um, the, the group of, of, uh, of communities that have been three feet or six feet apart. And I was, I just thought it was interesting that most that started with three feet apart were, uh, it's seven out of thirteen, by the way, not a lot, but were mostly grades nine through twelve. And forty-eight, as I, as I read your report, um, were considering three feet. And, um, but so it's, they're considering three feet, but most started with six feet. So I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, Lisa, or if that's relevant or whatever. But I was, I was fascinated that seven out of thirteen that started with thirteen, was started, I'm sorry, started with three feet, were mostly grades nine through twelve.
Yeah. And that, that gathering of information was something that I did with another superintendent. Uh, because there is no place on the Department of Education's website where you can look at an accurate reflection of what schools in the Commonwealth are doing what. So we did our own internal, um, Google, Google, uh, survey and asked each other those very questions because we're all curious, like, you know, are we way out of whack or are all these other schools doing it? People are comparing us to other schools. Um, and when you dig deep, you find out that that's not really the case. Um, and whether it's good or bad, it doesn't matter. It's the data of what other people are doing. And I'm a big, don't compare winter public schools to anybody but winter public schools. However, and we are a unique place, whether people like that or not, we're a small community. And, um, we are different than most people in most places in what we can do and, and our collaborative efforts. Um, but I think it's important to at least have a baseline of understanding when folks are saying we're the only school around that's not full in-person learning or the only school that, that, you know, isn't going back yet. Um, so that's why I provided you with that information.
Yeah, it was great.
The high schools, uh, some of the high schools went back first. I don't know. My brain, it kind of made sense. And then all of a sudden, um, we're hearing that the mandate is one thing that we know that's going to be mandatory is different than what we've sort of all been thinking. So.
Yeah.
Welcome to my role.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I apologize. I'm not with you folks in the school committee room. Uh, I'm on a planned road trip across country, um, after the election. It's something I always wanted to do. And I think it's a great opportunity. But one thing I'm seeing everywhere I go in every state is school buses and they're filled. Teachers are being vaccinated. The president said back in January, school needs to return full time within a hundred days. April fifth is around that time. We can't keep waiting for D E S I. I believe the winter public schools has to lead and lead by example. And if Ms. Barry puts forth her motion, again, I'd happily second it.
Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. So, um, I guess, as you mentioned, as the, the mandatory or mandate by the state says, one, K through five to go back.
They can't hear you now though, Gus. Come to the mic, please.
The next meeting, I think we'll have more microphones.
So it sounds to me that it's mandatory for K through five to return. So I don't think we're going to take a vote on that. They're going back on the fifth.
Correct.
Or before.
Correct.
Okay. So right now, the only question we have is middle and high school.
Correct.
But we're waiting for a direction from D E S I, uh, for us to be able to make a decision on how that's going to happen.
Correct.
So I guess there's kids that are going to be going back full time, five days a week.
Yes.
So we don't have to vote on that. That's done.
Yes.
So I think we need to wait until we get the D E S I information. And then have an emergency meeting within a few days of that information because we still have time. I, I don't, well, I, I, I think we have to because we don't know what they're going to say. I'm assuming that they're going to say, they're going to actually reduce the things that we're going to have to do. So I think it's going to be very easy for us to have an emergency meeting and get, get everybody back in the buildings by April fifth.
Why can't we do it the other way? Why can't we make the vote tonight and have an emergency meeting? If the, if the, um, if the, if the regulations or requirements come in and require us to rethink that?
Well, i- if we follow Robert's rules, Ms. Barry made a motion and I seconded it. I mean, I always believe we follow Robert's rules.
No, we, we, I'm just, we haven't, we haven't got that by yet. We haven't got that by yet, buddy.
Did she withdraw her motion?
We're not, we're not there yet. We're not there yet. I know maybe the rules are different, you know, across the country, but they're not yet. Right now, we're in the, we're in the messages. So I think what we have to do is just wait a little while and see what happens and then, um, but it's going to be quick. It's not going to be like the next meeting. It's not, it's going to be when we get these mandates, which I'm, I'm, I'm very confident will be less stringent than we have now.
But if they come, I mean, when are they going to come? They keep like messing, like yanking us around. It's ridiculous. Why can't we lead the charge?
My concern is that if we, if we leave that charge right now and, and our management team goes in one direction and we put all this effort in that direction and then we're told we have to take a shot left, then we waste a lot of effort and time. But if we get that direction from the, uh, from the state and then we meet within the next couple of days, from what we're understanding, it's going to be within a day. If, if we have to meet on a Friday, I'll meet on a Friday.
Well, I, it doesn't matter. And like I said, my, my thing would be that, um, I understand what you're saying, Julie. I, I feel the same way I do. But if the, if it doesn't come back the way that we think, or it, it might be, then we're going to be confusing more people. We're going to be saying we're coming back and then no, we're not going to.
I can be coming back for decades, no matter what.
Yes, Ms. Howard.
Where, where the chairman?
Go on to the microphone again. So, um, I agree how frustrating it is to wait for the Department of Education. Believe me, I'm, I'm, they frustrate me every day. Um, I do, I do believe that they have no choice but to come out and tell us this week. I think it's important to clarify that the April fifth date, from what we know, and we'll see what's written on paper, whether it's tomorrow, Wednesday or Thursday, the April fifth date is K to five, I believe, it's actually pre-K to five, but we don't have it in the record on school. It's pre, it's, uh, pre-K to five. And if you cannot go back, you must obtain a waiver. They may not give you a waiver if you need it. And then you, you, you will be forced to change your schedule and do whatever it is, um, that you have to do. I also think it's important to understand that, and I, maybe, maybe we weren't clear enough tonight, but there are steps that we have to still put in place to ensure that our kids can get back. And, and I'm hearing a sense of, you know, if, if we say everybody's going to go back on the fifth, I'm certainly not in disagreement. I think there has to be an understanding that, one, if the department's education policy change reflects these items in it, the school committee does not have any authority over public education policy. So I think you need to really see what the policy is so that you can then say, oh, they left this out. The school committee is going to make that determination at this point. Um, I also think, you know, and I hear Ms. Barry's, um, passion and, you know, frustration. I'd love to say I don't care what the Department of Education has to say. And I am all on board with doing anything faster than the Department of Education. I don't think there's a superintendent jail. I low-key might want to go there at some point. But I, I don't know what the implications are if in fact they have a policy that we refuse to follow. And if they, something, and it would have to be a very strict policy that no high school kids are going back. I do not foresee that coming out of the Department of Education. If they say high school goes back June first and we can get high school back by April fifth, we need to do that. And I don't think we'll get ourselves caught in trouble if we do something that they're asking us to do at a certain time, if we do it before and we can prove that we're ready. If we can prove already, we have the, the classroom set up appropriately, we've got the distancing down, there would be no reason for them to fight us going back early. Um, I'm not in, in any way, shape or form asking to delay this. What I don't want to happen is the school committee to take a vote, to do something and the parents believe that that's exactly what's going to happen when you don't have the authority to do it. I'm here to advise you, not to tell you what to do by any means. I do think you need to think about that piece of it. Um, the April fifteenth for us is whether you take a vote tonight or don't take a vote, um, or come back on, in two days from now. It's, it's irrelevant to us. We're still pulling for our kids to come back as soon as possible, fully five days in person, K to twelve. And I, I hope that made sense. And I, I believe me when I tell you I'm not asking the committee not to take a vote. If you feel that that's in the best interest of the school committee, um, I will support whatever it is that this school is doing.
Yes, I'm in favor of seeing everybody back in school. I'm really in favor of following the law that the governor's laid down and D E S I has laid down and get our youngest kids in on the fifth. I think we should wait to hear about the seniors in, in the middle school, even though I, I would love to see them in there on the fifth and I think they should get in there as soon as possible. I think I, I like to make a motion to table this for one week and have another meeting next Monday night so that we know where D E S I is going with us. And then we can put this to bed and say, yes, we want everybody back in school on the fifth.
Do I have a second on that motion? Actually, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah. But I made a motion to table it.
I'm sorry, you made a motion to table.
There's no discussion on the motion to table.
I have a, 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 a second on the motion to table. This Powell, you want to second the motion to table for one week? This Powell, you are making a second on the motion to table for one week?
Yes, I am making a second to, on the motion to table for one week pending,
One week.
For one week, um, pending D E S I's decisions and that we would meet regardless of whether or not, I, I can't add on, but I would encourage, I would expect that we would, this would be a, um, meeting regardless of what D E S I does so that we are guaranteed to be able to have a vote on whether or not to go back to school in a, in a week.
Jim, on this, um, just, I want to be clear on grades K through five are going back on, before the fifth, full time.
Yes, that's my understanding of the current.
Can't hear that composition.
I said, Mr. Matucci asked a question, whether or not K through five would be returning on April fifth pursuant to the state's regulations. The answer is in the affirmative. Yes, they will be unless there's something that prevents us or requires us to move forward, uh, to get a waiver on some aspect of what's required. So that is, uh, not on the table right now, but the motion to table is and there's no further discussion on motions to table. Therefore, I would like a roll call vote. Ms. Ames?
Ms. Barry?
No.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
No.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swoe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Jim?
Motion passed.
For one week. And just, Brian, if I could say something, we, we're pushing as far as the town. You try to make Winter a leader in, uh, the efforts to get people back in school. Uh, if, as you know, uh, the teachers are eligible for shots starting on the eleventh. But Winter, uh, went a little bit further. We've been fighting and fighting. Finally got some vaccine into Winter. We were able to get sixty teachers vaccinated on Saturday. So we'll work to get them vaccinated so they can get back to school and feel safe. Hopefully, uh, another batch is coming. We, maybe we can get a few more.
Excellent news. Uh, in the future, just because of the way we're set up right now, I would ask just to wait to be recognized. Uh, it's difficult to, we have live people that are, are looking to be recognized. I know we're having some difficulty this evening with, uh, audio, uh, but if we just wait to be recognized, uh, before you speak.
Mr. Champ?
Yes, Mr. Matucci.
Um, I'd like to just put, uh, make sure we have a meeting scheduled now, make a meeting for the week.
I, I think, I think that's,
Next Monday, six P M will be the meeting. So just make sure Patty posts it.
Correct. Yes, Ms. Howard.
Just for, uh, clarifying purposes, the, the motion to table does not change the school committee's ability to make a decision, am I correct? So as you move forward, whatever decisions are in your purgative,
Yes, if, if, yes.
We are still going to be continuing, you're not asking us to slow down or not do anything. We are still continuing the plan to return all kids to school as soon as possible. We know we have an April fifth date and to continue to strive for that date for all of our kids. But I, I, I haven't done a motion to table before, so I'm, I'm asking just to clarify that that's not going to prevent it from coming up.
The, the motion to table is on a specific vote, uh, as far as everyone in turn. The, uh, K through five, it's already been established by the state that that's the direction we're moving in. Uh, the table vote would be, uh, for the rest of the students moving forward, depending on the regulations that the state comes down with, uh, before our next meeting, which will be, uh, Monday of next week. So we would continue to march, we would continue to keep by working towards the goal of live, uh, education, five days a week for all our students. Did anyone hear that? You too, Phil?
Yeah. The, the clarification?
Yes.
Just real clarification. So. So, the opportunity to have full, in-school, five days a week is fine. And those that decide to stay remote can also stay remote. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any whole-school applications this evening, Ms. Gallivan?
We do not.
Okay. Personnel matters. Ms. Howard, do we have any personnel matters this evening?
For personnel matters, we have no appointments, no resignations, no retirements. We are posting for an ELA long-term sub-position. And also at the high school, one of the high school stipended positions, my apologies, no leaves of absence.
Thanks very much. New business, we have Miller Field. Ms. Howard, we pick it up to do from this afternoon.
So we're beginning to receive requests for the use of Miller Field moving forward from outside groups not related to the public school, so to rent Miller Field. We currently have a hold on renting any property that the school manages, from the theater to any of our school facilities. And now that things are heading in a better direction, I bring this to the school committee for consideration, perhaps to be sent to buildings and grounds to discuss that. We have a few other matters that we'd like to discuss with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So perhaps we could talk about whether or not we're going to be able to start to rent the field out again, or not. So that's what I would suggest.
Motion to send the buildings for us.
Do I have a second? A second on sending the motion, the information to Buildings and Grounds for a meeting, and to be brought back to the full committee. Do I have a second on that for Mr. Matucci? Motion?
Second.
Ms. Powell, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can we have a whole call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory? Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swoe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Finished business this evening, Public Relations. Does anyone have anything for Public Relations?
No, I just said I did want to mention that we're going to be talking about curriculum at the end of the year, perhaps with the Committee of Curriculum Committee, but also I'm looking forward to hearing what's happened to the curriculum through the year. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Powell, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, the Heinz Group, I want to mention that they are offering a scholarship that is open now for students who are not going to be doing a conventional four-year university. This would be students who are going to a trade school, fire, military, computer programming. That is available now through hgScholarship.com, hgScholarship.com. You can file an application for that, and that's open through June 15th.
Thank you. Ms. Corey, do you have anything this evening?
Just to let everybody know that we're finally beating this pandemic. And Winterp, thanks to Senator Joe Boncory, got us a bunch of vaccines. We vaccinated all our senior shut-ins a couple of weeks ago. I want to thank Meredith, and I want to thank Jean Maggio and the MRC for running a great clinic on Saturday, where they gave out three hundred vaccinations. And they worked people over sixty-five that were from housing, plus frontline workers, DPW, and teachers. So sign up. Get on the list, because you never know if there's a shot left over at the end of the day. So get on the list, please. Thanks.
Mr. Capabianco?
No, not them.
Okay, Ms. Powell? Ms. Barry, I have something. Ms. Barry?
So I just wanted to address the fact that we're postponing this vote to send middle schoolers and high schoolers back to school. I understand. I don't understand it, to be fair, because I don't believe that the Department of Education or DSC is going to get us the information we need, but we'll take a vote anyway. But I want to be clear, that we have a mental health crisis in this town. And this isn't Suzie is sad because she can't play with her friends. This is Suzie wants to kill herself. This is what we're dealing with. And, you know, I'm tired of people making light of it and talking about it. And I have statistics here, and this is from a WBUR study. I want to, and I will send these links to the school committee after this. But by early fall, many Massachusetts ERs were seeing about four times more children and teens in psychiatric crises weekly than usual. This was a mental health program director at a Franciscan hospital for children in Boston. One in six U.S. children have a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder, according to the CDC. Data shows problems like depression become more prevalent in teen years. One in thirteen high school students have attempted suicide, and at least half of kids with mental illness don't get treatment. And the system is so overrun that children have to wait days and weeks to get a hospital bed. They wait in the ER. What about the kids that don't go to the ER, don't seek help, or parents aren't able to advocate aggressively for one reason or another? The schools being open and having kids in there full-time helps to keep eyes on these children. And I'm telling you right now, I will stop at nothing until we get these kids back in school this year, by April 5th, if not sooner. This has to happen, regardless of what DSC says. And we will file some sort of appeal to DSC and say, "We have to get these kids back, because this town and this community has a mental health crisis." And those who know, know. And that's all I have to say on that. On a positive note, I'd like to end by wishing all the student athletes that are participating in Fall, is it Fall 2? Fall 2. Those games kicked off this week, and I think it's a great outlet for kids. And I'm thrilled that they're able to participate, and I want to wish them luck on a good season.
Mr. Matucci, do you have anything this evening? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Patty, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swoe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?